Big September 8, 2016. Let the record show that all directors are present although Tina French has left for the moment and she'll be returning shortly. I'd like to, I trust everyone's had a chance to look at the consent agenda, including minutes from previous meeting and the financial report. Are there any comments or do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
All second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Consent agenda is passed. My belief tonight, we are supposed to begin the meeting with a presentation from Salmon Drift Creek Watershed Council. Can you give, fill us in a little bit on that?
Josh could not be with us tonight. He has an appointment in Portland. So I spoke with him earlier in the week and he said that he would like to reschedule this until the October board meeting. The general discussion will be on a variety of topics. Most important to us is the water quality of Thompson Creek and the testing regime and the money they're seeking to do additional testing and how we may partner in with that of an in-kind contribution. In other words, no monetary contribution, rather in-kind. And what we're already doing in support of that action constitutes the full and complete in-kind portion. So again, I, we will expect to see this scheduled for the October board meeting.
Great, thank you. Sorry Josh couldn't make it. I know originally he had planned to do that and more or less an emergency situation came up. Although we have no signees for comments from citizens, is there anyone that would like to comment on agenda or non-agenda items prior to the meeting? I don't see that taking place. Okay. We'll move to unfinished business. Tonight we'll have committee briefings, beginning with the sewer committee.
Thank you, sir. So we did have a sewer committee meeting on July 18th and I'm not sure, I think we gave a brief report about that, Tom did at the last meeting. So we're going to continue our discussion that we started at that meeting on September 13th. I can, just to make sure that rumors don't start flying, the report that I read in the paper almost made it sound like the city could only support the project if the area was annexed. And that's definitely not true and what we've, what we've learned since then is that a sanitary district has the authority to establish a mandatory hookup requirement, which was the reason that the city thought that annexation was its only avenue for major participation in the project. So we're over that hurdle. Looks like the obvious direction that we'll have to go is to form a sanitary district that will not involve annexation and I want that rumor dispelled right now. I mean, not to say that annexation is not a remote possibility, but it certainly is far down the list in terms of the options that we have to form to get to East Side of Lake Stewart. So with that, the rest of what we really want to talk about, we should wait, I think, till our next board meeting when we've had our second meeting with the city.
Could you tell us what time that meeting is on the 13th? I don't see it in my notes.
It's on, it's 9:30 a.m. on the 13th at the northwest conference room at City, third floor City Hall, down toward the, you know, the north end of the building as you're walking that way. It's on your left side. It's not the city manager's conference room, it's the other one at that end of the third floor.
Great. Hey, thanks Brian. Events and Communication Committee report is, do you want to do that or Miles? Miles?
Hi, I'm Miles Schlesinger and I am on the Events Committee, Communications Committee. And I want to report on my fishing derby that I am trying to organize for Devil's Lake. And we had previously scheduled it on April, the last weekend in April 2017. And I found out when I got the new application for a grant from the VCB that they're delaying the funding of all grants and redoing their application and such and they haven't had it approved yet by the committee and that's due to be done this month and then they'll get it out and they'll give us about three months until January 1st or 2nd of 2017 to apply for funds. And that won't not leave enough time to do this project and get funding. And I don't think it's fair or it's advisable to go ahead with posters and all of the rigmarole that we have to do to put on a good event if there isn't funding available until next year. And even if we were approved in January, that only leaves three months and that is not enough time to do it. So I would like to put in the application but for 2018 and have your approval to go with the program and see if we do get funding and if we do, then we have a long time to promote it and it can be truly a good event, I think.
Yeah, if they'll allow us to-
And we, just a quick reminder to everybody, please speak closely into the microphones. I know they've had a hard time recording us in the past, so.
Do, you said you'll find out if we can apply in January of 17 for funds to be spent in 18?
That is my assumption that it will be funding and they'll just earmark future VRD disbursements so that they know that they have that in the kitty to dispense to our organization.
Good.
Well, I think we're behind the concept, so whether it be 2017 or 2018, I'm for that.
Me too.
Great. So Miles, you have our permission to go forward with that?
Okay, and I will do that and keep you advised as to the progress with the advice that at the VCB. We currently postponed our program to have a revival and David was supposed to check on the water skiing team if one would come down and what the cost to the district would be so we could have a big affair with entertainment on the gazebo and make it an all-day affair rather than a limited four or five hours.
Yeah, so it's about, it's less than $2,000.
Less than $2,000?
They said probably be about $1,500 to come down for a day.
So they put on three shows during the day or?
We could figure that out, yeah.
And so, we're looking at trying to put on a much expanded revival, like similar to different events we've had in the past.
More similar to the car festival that we had in the 90s.
Very good. Okay.
Christmas parade, we're postponing that until a little later in the fall and then we can make a decision whether or not we want to start to try to twist people's arms to decorate their votes and bring it out for an affair. And I think that's about all of the, what we are doing right now.
I see here, Miles, that the boat races are, will be postponed until next year. Is that, is that the current ones that come out? I thought they were scheduled the end of this month, is that correct?
This is the first weekend in October.
Right. But for some reason I was thinking they were-
This isn't the time trials, is it?
It's time trials and I believe that they're still coming this year, aren't they?
I believe so. I believe so.
The ski races are scheduled to be here in the spring and the fishing derby is still scheduled for the kids' fishing frenzy in April.
Okay, good. Well, I just wanted to make sure that, I, I'm pretty sure that a couple of months ago I saw some stuff that come, came across my desk about the boat races and I think they're either, they normally are the first weekend in October, but for some reason I was thinking they may be the end of September this year, so those, the event I believe is still taking place.
You have any idea that?
I have not heard from anybody from that organization. Steve Brown may have.
Sure. Steve, you want to, do you want to fill us in?
I can officially report because I received the letter of insurance for our property, which they actually conduct the time trials on our property. The Columbia Outboard Racing Association will be conducting the Rocky Stone Memorial Kilo, October 1st and 2nd. And yeah, we're looking forward to a great race and anyone who is out there in the audience is invited to look at the race. And typically what ends up happening is they have scheduled races, anywhere's from 20 to 43 boats across the United States that come to Devil's Lake, which is known as the fastest lake in the United States because of it being at sea level. Depending on weather, people will sign up on Sunday and pay their fee to race on Sunday also. So I can give you that factual information, it is happening.
Great, thanks Steve.
Thanks Steve. Thanks, Miles.
Thank you, Miles. Septic inspection?
We're waiting until, unfortunately I won't be able to attend the meeting on the 13th, but following that, I'll regroup with Brian and talk about where we're heading from there.
Sounds great, thank you. Save our shoreline and water quality monitoring. Mary Ellen, do you want to give us a quick update?
Well, we've completed our testing from Memorial to Labor Day. We did 15 E. coli tests. The only problems throughout the areas were the inputs on Devil's Lake. We didn't run into any red or yellow E. coli. Do you recall any yellows anywhere else? No, just Rock Creek and Thompson Creek. My aim for next summer is to clean up Thompson Creek, whatever way we can. I'd like to help those people correct their problem. So we'll work on that. We also carried out four algae tests on seven of the public sites, all the public sites. We didn't bother with Rock Creek and Thompson Creek because that, there was no point for that. But the algae was clean, no toxins. We did one last week in time for Labor Day, perfectly clear. So the lake is clean, the lake is good, so.
So even though we have an algae bloom going on, it's not toxic algae?
Yep. We carefully dipped nine places in each of the seven sites and did all the testing and the two pink lines, I sent you a picture, the two pink lines are equal, so that means absolutely no question, no toxin.
Great. Any questions or news?
Well, I would like to say that, give a thank you to both you and Kathy for, you know, really making a commitment this summer to doing that. My hope is that through our expansion of our internship program, that that can then be taken over by a group of interns from Oregon State. But you two did a wonderful job and it was a good commitment.
Really appreciate it.
Nice to get it done, isn't it?
Yeah.
Thanks very much.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you. Special Projects Committee.
Well, at this point, we are on hold until next month. We'll have our regular meeting. I'm not quite sure of the date.
Pin one, it says here.
Pin one. And we'll be continuing on from where we left off and that was trying to facilitate more activities in different projects that will be upcoming next, next year, like the maybe spring shoreline cleanup from winter storm debris and whatever else may pop up that we get wind of. So we'll be on hold until then.
Great, thanks. Thanks Bill. And again, a special thanks to all those people who have participated in the committees since their formation so far. There's still a lot of work to do and you are welcome to sign up for any and all committees that you may desire involvement with. So thank you for those that have taken their time and efforts to do that thus far. Okay. Devil's Lake dredging project. Tom, would you like to let us know about that?
Yes, I did talk with the contractor from California who had pledged a suction dredge. It is no longer free, however, he indicated that he is keeping it. He rebuilt, modified, rebuilt and enlarged the engine on the dredge. So he's going to send me a price proposal for two-week and four-week rent of the dredge assembly for next year, for the in-water work period. So we'll see what that looks like. I don't expect it will be terribly expensive. However, the bags, I double-checked the price yesterday and the bags are in the $3,000 range, so the price will be, the project cost will be more than it was last year certainly, if we use that method. Suction dredge.
Can you tell me, so we would suck it out and put, put the, what we get off in the bags, let them de-water and then place that sand back on the beach or somewhere else?
Based on the benign nature of the sediment, sand material, the DSL and Cora would like to have the sand back for the central coast. It is considered beach stard, categorized as beach stard, sand stard. So our permit would be more favorably reviewed if we committed the sand back to the beach. But that isn't necessarily, I mean, we can use the sand for other purposes if we wish.
So would that mean we can discharge the, our dredge material on the beach? Or it has to be in a bag?
Under direction, under a combined agency direction.
Great.
Well, and, and just a quick update, maybe you can tell us a little bit about this. Originally, this was going to be a free project initiated by at least one or more individuals that were going to use their excavators to help do this. And in doing more investigation, it, you really found that ODFW was more likely to be favorable to a dredging situation rather than an excavation situation. Is that correct?
Well, the problem was the reach of the excavator. The one contractor who I discussed this with has a reach of some 20 feet and we really need 80-plus feet to reach across the terminus of the, of the lake. The other thing is the excavator track would degrade the wetland down by the dam. So there would be a wetland restoration, which actually is, allow it to regrow itself. But from a environmental perspective, they would prefer to see suction dredging except for the effect it may have on Pacific lamprey. So that's why I met with the tribe, with Sluts, and had this discussion with them to do a coordinated effort for species presence and perhaps urging the lamprey to move out of the working, the work zone, so.
Is there a possibility, just financially feasible to do part of the voluntary, voluntary project and the suction dredging? So maybe we only had to run it for one week? Or?
The dredge?
Yeah. Is it not, is it too complex to do that permit-wise?
Well-
Or is it not helpful?
I have a call-in to the contractor, the excavator, to approach cutting a channel on the north side of the, of the lake. In other words, in proximity to where he would park his equipment on Hostettler Park. The problem though is when the impoundment is out and we get winter storms, they'll deposit sand back in and perhaps choke the lake back where it is today. So if we use a combination of dredging and mechanical removal, it should be done, done in the same work window, in the same two-week window, which would be 2017, after September 15th, 2017.
Question I have is, why is that the only in-water work period? And it seems to me our optimum work period would be when the water's, the lake is at its maximum, not maximum, but at its highest point with rainfall that we've had, so it's a, our highest outflow of the lake. And utilize what I call an underground or underwater jet prop situation to move sand rather than, I mean, that's in the water and it's basically pushing it into our water column that's running out of the lake and taking it back beyond the dam, back to the beach.
Right. The in-water work period is driven by the threatened Coho salmon.
And do they run all winter, the high water?
The, well, they do. They do. So the window is generally one October through one February. And ODFW said they would extend the window in the front end by two weeks into 15th.
Okay. Well, yeah, by, well, February, we're well on our way to high water situations, so. Another avenue.
So previously, we were trying to do it when the water was the very lowest so that we could get, but if we're doing a different method, then I see what you're saying.
Well, but previously, we misinterpreted the in-water work window. It was listed incorrectly in the permit.
Yeah, it was a summer, a summer window versus a winter.
Yeah, it's really never been a summer window.
Right.
That information was received and developed and memorialized incorrectly.
Oh, okay.
Well, typically, you would have that in, in salmon-bearing streams if you were doing bridge work. I mean, not in our water body, but up in the woods type thing where you have, you know, low creek elevations to excavate and install your concrete embuppments in the water, in the creek bed. So there is a summertime work window in upland streams. So anyway, irregardless, that may be why that, that window was thought about or was brought up. So, yeah, could be. Who knows?
So that is the status on the lake dredging project?
Thank you.
About our aeration project?
I've been receiving preliminary drawings, particularly from Richard Steele, who is a sub-consultant to Dr. Horn. He lives in the UK and he is sending in line CAD drawings. I received so many of them that I was beginning to get concerned because I had no comment from Dr. Horn or from HPH. So I made contact with HPH and expressed my concern and they said, "Well, Dr. Horn should be reviewing all these." And I said, "But Dr. Horn is on vacation." I just called his number and he said, "I'll be back in California on the 6th of September." So we had several discussions and I finally urged them to suspend design production until Dr. Horn got back from vacation, fully review the progress of both HPH and his consultant in England to ensure that the drawings on, from both sets are integrated and portray a good design picture that fits the needs of the lake. And I couldn't see it coming together in that manner. So I really want this meeting to happen and it's scheduled for the 14th at 9:30 a.m. It'll be a conference call, including those from Europe will be calling in. And then once we have that meeting and agree that, yes, we do have a couple of options, two or three options that are appropriate for the design of the system, then they will move forward.
Good. Yes, any other questions from the board with regard to that?
When does that date place on?
14th, Wednesday, 9:30 a.m.
And it's a conference call?
It's a, it's an international conference call, so if you want to hear about it, come on over and sit in the office.
Thanks.
Could you update us on our lake manager search?
Yes. I reached out to SDAO this afternoon to see how many applicants we have received so far. We have received none. However, I have confirmation from two, probably three people, that they will be submitting their resume for this job. I know one resume is in the mail from North Carolina, so it should be received probably tomorrow by SDAO. So I believe we'll have three applicants.
At least, at least that you know of. And, and just a quick reminder that we were planning on having an executive session a week, a week ago last Monday, in order to interview the only candidate that had applied for the job and at the last minute, he decided to withdraw his application. And so that sent us back to a conversation with John Stein. And so Tina and I did a conference call with John Stein and with Tom in the room and talked about the, how we're going to promote this job and at least we made some changes such that we're getting some inquiries. And so I guess we'll wait till the applications come in and, and then we'll decide to convene a executive session and, and do interview process at that time.
So what were the changes?
All, all we did was broaden the description to try to, to get more applicants. I think making the, we didn't set a specific salary.
Okay.
As well as, what were the other things that we did?
Oh, go ahead.
On education, put BABS, Environmental Engineering and related, or a combination of education and experience. We had quite a few mandatories such as multi-level agency permitting, accomplishment of-
Grant writing.
Grant writing, multiple project management, in other words simultaneous project.
And see-
So some of that I put down, or staff put down- So some of that I put down, or staff put down in desirable and moved a lot of the personality attributes up from desirable to mandatory, such as integrity, comfortable working alone.
We just kind of moved things around a little bit.
Salt starter.
I just wanted to kind of get a feel.
Well, the other thing, too, is that, you know, the thing that we were concerned with, that it wasn't getting out to the right people. And so we directed John to expand where he was placing the job application.
They only, SDAO only puts it typically on their website.
People are going to find it there.
Right.
Right. And so we said, "No, no, no, it needs to go out." So I think we suggested indeed ZipRecruiter. Steph had already put it on Craigslist.
Craigslist.
We put it on IMATCH, which is the Oregon Employment Department.
Right.
And there was one more.
We didn't put it on the two commercial websites because of their cost, ZipRecruiter and IMATCH. ZipRecruiter and one other one, rather.
Okay.
They were quite expensive.
But the idea is that, I just don't think we got it out to the right people. And I know since I've started looking for jobs or in the years ago that I did, it's changed a lot. And I think that's the key, is that getting it out there in the right spots.
Yeah, it sounds like John needs to change his process.
Have we looked at the list of trade journals and the type of entities and publications that we used to put out RFPs to? It strikes me that, you know, you might have an audience there of the same kind of people that might be interested in the job.
Or that where we publish the RFPs.
Where we publish RFPs in whatever form as we publish them, that we just might reach a wider audience of people that would have the right qualifications and interest.
We did advertise in NOMs.
Mm-hmm. And I don't know, I was never involved in that process of deciding where that should be published, but it's just a thought that...
Well, one of the most important things was assurance that it was posted in the state employment division site.
That's where the three applicants have found us, isn't it?
Apparently so.
Yeah.
So that's where people go first, I think.
Makes sense.
If they're looking in the state of Oregon, if we're looking nationally and they don't really care where the job is, they're going to look in NOMs or one of the other places that you're talking about, which is what we asked John to research.
Well, you might look...
We're 300% better than we were at the last meeting.
Yes, we are.
Well, the other thing is, I think Brian has a good point, that, hey, maybe we should find out where those RFPs were published and if we're getting into those or what the cost would be for that. I think that's a great suggestion.
I mean, you just look at the list and see if that represents a good way to expand the target audience.
Right.
Yeah, that's what we've been trying to do, is figure out how we can have...
Yeah, it sounds like you've done a good job if we've got 300% more.
[laughing]
And it just went out this week, so...
It's a good word.
It's been about a week, so I expect we'll have more than three.
Well, I'm encouraged by all of a sudden, three instead of one. And so I expect that we'll get more than that. I actually had an email from a friend of ours who's a former professor at Willamette, and he sent the job description out to a bunch of his colleagues and Steph, too, and former colleagues at Willamette, and put a nice letter with us that we were looking for this position and gave the qualifications, too.
Great.
So we're getting it out to a wider audience.
It also went to ODFW and they distributed it all through the marine programs at Hatfield and through their office. They have several.
I got an email from Christine Clapp with ODFW, and she highlighted us as an opening, too. So she attached our job description and everything. So I just received that, I think, in the last couple of days. Okay. New business? New business from the board?
Do we want to set a workshop following your September 13th meeting, Brian, to talk about the board involvement or where we're at with the goal, depending on what you find out with the sewer situation and where we want to go with that?
Well, you know what I'd like to do is maybe at this next meeting, talk about since, remember, we had a workshop with the city back in April? And the, you know, and that workshop was left with the idea that there would be another one in the reasonably near future, and that hasn't happened. So I'm thinking maybe at this next meeting, we could go over the possibility of having a workshop that involves the city staff and city council, to which all of the public is invited. But are you talking more like a...
Well, I guess when I, yes, I think that would be positive, too, in whether we meet as a board prior to that or post to that. I want to wrap my head around what, and maybe it's just what you visualize, as the dilweds' involvement in if a sewer district is going to be formed, what do you see our involvement, staff's involvement? And where do we, where are we going as far as being involved in that pretty large project?
Yeah. And I'm trying to get to that point myself. And to my mind, the city's role is a big variable here, and that's, I'm trying to nail that down. And I think the appropriate time to report back to the board, maybe for our first report, would be when we have a good understanding of where the cities come from, which hopefully we'll have after this next meeting, so...
So maybe at the October, our October board meeting, you'll have a better idea of what happens at the September 13th meeting, and then maybe we can schedule something for the end of October?
Yeah, including that, you know, the best way to get an understanding might be to get a workshop with the city. And the idea being that we'd come out of that. When you don't just have city staff, but you also have city councilors and people weighing in, because it is a little bit hard for city staff to commit to much of anything when, you know, the final decision rests with the council. So I would like to see that as the next step. I mean, we can report to the board anytime. And I'll give you a report at the next meeting in October.
Sure.
But I'm thinking we might be at a better place for a better report than the report that I'll give to you in October, after we've had a workshop with the city. And maybe we can get that before our October meeting, although I kind of doubt it.
So would you mind sending like an email out after the September 13th meeting and just kind of letting us know where you think the direction is heading at that point, so we can, you know, be a little bit more informed there?
Yeah. And what I thought to do actually today was to send you the minutes of our sewer committee meetings so far. But I thought I'd wait till tomorrow to do that, so that there wouldn't be, you know, bombing you five hours before our board meeting with that. So that would give you some feel, but, you know, it's a lot of brainstorming right now to kind of see how we can massage this into something that's, you know, that's doable and that we got everybody on the same page.
Right. I just want to, yeah, I, yeah, I want to be informed, so that if somebody comes up to ask me what's going on, I can give them an answer other than a shoulder shug.
Yeah, fair enough. And I think I should have sent you the minutes before this, although I only got the minutes of the last city meeting about a week ago, so...
No problem. I've had plenty to read.
Yeah. But we'll get you some more.
Thank you.
Any other new business? I have, I think, one item. I received a letter, a questionnaire from our insurer, SDAO, regarding a board reviewing, they have a questionnaire where we get a 2% discount in our rates. I don't know if anybody else has received that. Did you receive it also, David?
In the past, I think we have.
Okay. What I thought I would do is, since it just came to me, I think in yesterday's mail, I thought I'd go ahead and get it to Tom, send it out to everybody, and then have that part of our consent agenda for next time. Just as a questionnaire, if we all review it and from my understanding, say yes, that we've been informed of these things, then we can sign off and get our 2% discount. But it's a pretty simple questionnaire, I think about 16 or 18 questions. So I know that's coming. The other thing that I had that I was going to ask Tom to report on was that, what's our status on our computer website update and everything?
Per the favorable vote we had last month to move forward with the expenditure for the website update or creation, we did so. Dewey Design is the contractor, and he has had two meetings with me, one with you, Kent. He showed us some screenshots, explained to us what he envisions the functionality to be, the interactivity to be. So that was approved. He's moving forward with it. And I expect that we'll have a working test within two to three weeks, hopefully two weeks, for review, and then he'll finalize that. And then, if the board members want to be informed of any portion of this before it goes live, then we'll figure out a way to do that. I'm sure there would be a temporary password where one could tap in and go, you know, go through it.
You know, I'll just say that I met with Jimmy, with Tom, I think it was about an hour and a half last week, I think it was. And he's put together some preliminary things, asked for some updated pictures and such, and described how easy it would be to access that. He said that he would have something, some kind of a presentation for us at the next board meeting, so that we could see exactly what's been done so far and then any changes that we might need to make and move from there. But at least it's moving forward. And I know that I sent him a bunch of pictures from, Bill Henderson has, that he's taken a lot from the lake. And then he was going to talk to a photographer to take some other pictures and such. So it'll be a fresh look. And I think if we look at the Chamber of Commerce website and to see what he's done there, it'll be on a similar type of look.
Cool.
Okay. Is there any other new business, non-agenda items? Do we have any additional comments from the audience?
Oh.
Wow, silent. Okay.
We home in time for dinner.
We have no objections?
Well, I've got a board comment and announcement. That's the next one.
All right.
I just wanted to let you know that the property owners in the Voyage Lake LID received our assessments for the, now, remember, this is for the backbone and paving. And the amount was $8,034 per lot, which was right in line with the expectations and the representations of costs, basically since the beginning of the project. That can be paid in cash, or there's a financing option for 20 years that includes 2.75%. It comes to a monthly payment of $43 per month for lot.
So you said backbone and paving, so that's not to hook up to the sewer?
No, that's not to hook up.
Just as main sewer.
Okay. That's what backbone means.
Right.
And then how much is it to hook up to the sewer?
The hookups and the total cost of hookup, purchase of the equipment, the total package, oh, and with the systems development charge, is about $13,000.
So it's about $21,000?
$21,000 total.
Total.
Including, there's about $4,000 in there for paving.
Does that, I just wonder, Brian, is that dependent on how far each individual is from the actual line, the main line itself? I was just wondering that, because as we look toward sewer-ing the east side of the lake, some people have lots that are very deep, me. And, you know, some people are very shallow. Is there a cost difference, depending on where you're at?
Well, sure, I mean, yeah, I mean, that's part of the hookup cost.
Right.
And, you know, that's, on the east side of the lake, I think that varies pretty widely. And I understand your problem over there. In our LID, I mean, properties are just uniformly right on front and on the road. So, I mean, that's, that just means that our hookup costs won't vary much, property owner to property owner. But I do understand and appreciate that on the east side, that variation can be rather drastic, and we need to figure out a way to equalize it. I would like to do that. I mean, that's, I have that in my lungs, firmly in my brain.
I just wondered...
So how do people pay?
Like, if you're thinking about yours, I mean, you have some neighbors behind you and stuff. You can track a main line up your driveway and have people share the cost of that extended by hooking in if you do easements.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, I wasn't sure how that could work. I know you're in a similar situation, but you've got people behind you, too.
Yeah.
But I have like an 800-foot lot, a deep lot, and only one neighbor. I'm just thinking it's going to be huge expense if to hook up.
Yeah, and as we get more into it, you know, I would like to just look at a way, first of all, to assess the differences in cost and maybe figure out some method for, let's say, averaging it, equalizing it. And maybe it won't be that much of a problem if, like David says, you know, you can branch off an 800-foot line five times. That might make a difference.
Right. Okay. Yeah. Very good. Well, I appreciate the update, too. That's good to hear. And $43 over 20 years doesn't sound like very much.
So what about the $13,000? Is there financing options for that as well?
If you hook up within three years, you can finance, the city will finance the SDC. There's, I think it's DEQ money available for the hookup. But anyway, yeah, the whole thing, it turned out that the whole thing was financeable if you hooked up within three years.
Well, I just feel like going forward with any kind of sewer system on the east side of the lake, that that's, you know, if that's, the cost is going to be the big key to sell people. I can't imagine anybody not believing that sewer-ing is not the right answer to long-term health of the lake and helping out with nutrient loads. At what cost, I think that's going to be the key to sell this.
There's absolutely no doubt about that.
So Brian, do you track people that are hooking up to the new LID? Or is it just, it's available to everybody that ran by, but...
I only know of three or four that have expressed interest in hooking up immediately.
Well, I've got a couple of customers on the north end that had sewer ran down, they have long driveways as well, and had a contractor hook up. And they were... had long driveways as well, and had a contractor hook up, and they were expressing in the range of $20,000. But regardless, they're still hooked up, and their septic system's now, doesn't work, so.
Is this a low-pressure system or gravity?
Yeah, low-pressure.
That $20,000 is
Well, if you're talking
How far are you running?
Talking an 800-foot run.
Yeah, and there's also, I believe, four or five residences on this one road, access road. It's up south of Blue Heron Landing, northwest 36th Street, or northeast.
Okay.
So, anyway, yeah, just curious.
The lateral that's, you know, off which you branch is the main cost, and the laterals are 10 feet long, so.
Yeah.
I mean, so, yeah, if you're dividing $20,000 five or six ways, then you're back into the, kind of, the typical cost of what that part of the hookup would be.
Good.
Great.
Steve, will you come up to the microphone, please?
Steve Brown, and I'm on the LID that Brian's referring to, and so what I have a question for, Brian, what's the total cost if you financed not only the pavement portion, but the SDC and the E1 pump to a property owner, both sides of it?
That's what we were just talking about. I think the additional cost, the SDC, the pump, and the electrical hookups, running it to the house, is estimated to be about $13,000.
Additional, above and beyond, so for a property owner
$21,000 total.
So for a property owner, if they were to finance it, what would be the monthly cost?
I can do that in about $107, $108 a month.
Correct. So for a person on a fixed income, and this has been a point of controversy, and I want this board to consider it for the other side of the lake, it is over $100 a month that is added to an individual that has fixed income. So the other clarification that I want to end up making is that it doesn't include the permits or the electrical hookup to your property, which there's an additional cost that's incurred to be able to hook up the pump to your meter, wherever that may be on your property. So that's an additional cost to the homeowners. So my point being is, is the statement that I wanted to end up making to this board, as the sewer committee goes forward, I would like the committee to gather information, not be locked in to city commitment, because the commitment for the city most likely is going to involve a partnership or a commitment in that it's the right thing to do, and I believe it is the best thing to do, long-term, for the health of the lake, to ensure that we're doing the best that we can to get nothing but clean water going into that lake, and ensuring that sewer systems aren't leaching into the lake. But I think we've already been able to determine through core samples that the condition of the lake and the condition of the bottom of the lake, if you look at the sediment, I don't think that's a big contributor to the problems of the lake in its current condition. So I'm going to revert back to what I said originally. I would like to see this board be very independent, gather all information, and make sure that we aren't forcing people on the other side of the lake to sign on to something that they can't afford, or that the expense in the end is going to be a lot more than what they thought it was going to be, because the last thing that we want to lose around the lake, I believe, is long-term residents on fixed incomes and families and generations that can afford, because of a sewer system, to be able to stay on the lake.
I have a question with regards to this, the added expense, and you said hooked up to the meter. So do you pay, is your sewer now metered, like your water?
No. Tina, I'm sorry, it was to, if you're going to put a pump in ground
Yeah.
you have to have power to the pump.
Okay.
Electrician.
Okay. And so, and then, but the sewer is not metered. Is it, and is there a utility bill for the sewer every month on top of this fee?
It's water sewer.
The city sewer charge that
So what is that?
Thirty, every two months.
I don't have sewer, so I don't know.
Yeah, that's my memory of, I don't pay the bills in my household, but my memory is that combined charge is $60 a month, or $60 every two months, 60 something.
So $30, and then you said
It includes water, though. Water's blended in there, too.
It's water and sewer.
So, that's why.
Is $30? But it's 100% more on the east side, right?
212%, the water bill is 212% on the east side of the city rate.
And so will sewer be as well, since they're not in the city?
No, there's no reason that it would be. I mean
These are the things that I'm saying that we need to end up making sure of. There were other hidden charges, so the certified letter that all homeowners received on the LID also had an application fee to process the paperwork that the city charges on top of it.
$25, I think that was. Was that right?
Uh, no, it was $40.
Okay.
So, again, I'm looking out for the neighbors, the community around the lake. For those who know, there's a lot of generations on the lake that are on fixed incomes, and I just felt myself, as a homeowner, part of this LID, going through the process. It was intriguing in the beginning, love it, that I have a paved road instead of a dirt road that wasn't very well maintained by the city, I love that part of it. But the final cost, I can afford it, but I know on our street, some of the generations or some of the retired people are going to be faced with bills if their system fails, because they don't have to hook up to it today. If their system fails
That's their, it's a $43 a month rate right now.
Which is, they also have in the paperwork, which people have to realize, you have an attachment to your deed also, that if you sell your home, the new purchaser has to hook up immediately, which to me, that means you have a value of your house. If you haven't hooked up, that value is going to be less
$30,000 less.
Yes, $30,000 less is what it's going to be, 26, possibly, that's going to be negotiated down. And so, it seemed like a good deal, but the other things that we were attached to, every five years, a sewer inspection. So I can tell you a story about when I bought my house 10 years ago. We asked for a sewer inspection, too, and a drain-filled inspection, and because of the way our system was put in, undocumented, like a lot of them with the county, they could inspect our tank and give us a green light, but they couldn't inspect our drain fill, because of where it was located. They could tell us if it was working or not. So under the current agreement with the city, if your, first of all, property owners, if they decide not to hook up until your system fails, you still have to go through a inspection at five-year, 10-year, and 15-year increments. If you don't pass that inspection, or that inspection similar to mine, they can't inspect it to the standards of the city, which there's no written standard, they can tell you to hook up immediately. So unless they have documentation that says to these standards that the inspection passes under my condition when I bought my home, since they said your septic tank is good, but we can't uncover your drain fill, because of where it is, we can see that it's draining and flowing, but we can't give you a clean inspection for purchasing your home, under those conditions at a five-year monument, I would have to hook up.
I'm losing it a little bit there. Steve, the requirement, there's a DEQ requirement, that if you have a sewer line within 300 feet of your house, and DEQ will not issue, well, and the county's the enforcement office for DEQ, will not issue a repair permit, you have to hook up. But that's only if you're within 300 feet of a sewer line. So I don't know how, I don't think any of this applies to people in the east side of the lake.
So, Brian, respectfully, the registered letter was sent out to all the homeowners on our street, and it was very brief and concise, and I suggest that you read
Are you talking about the LID?
Yes.
Well, I think I know all about the LID.
And the paperwork that we have to sign with the city, telling them by the 22nd of this month, whether or not we're going to pay the $8,000
Or finance it in 20 years.
Or finance it, it has conditions in there. Well, one page of conditions, that's what I'm referring to.
Well, basically, I think what you're trying to say is, there's a lot more to it than what it appears on the, when you originally look at it, and for us, as a board, to be aware of that.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, and that's the information that I'm trying to gather, so that we're all informed.
It's very important, again, as the board, I'm going to restate it, that
I agree.
Be independent, nonpartial, and I would be happy to turn over any of our paperwork that came last week with the conditions of the financing.
Well, and I'm still, I don't understand how
I can tell you what they are. You have to hook up within 20 years, you have to hook up on resale, no repair permits will be issued, so if you have a situation with your septic system where repair is required, then you have to hook up.
And a five-year inspection.
And the
Did you know that, that if you finance, that your system has to be inspected every five years?
Okay.
Well, I think, I mean, we're just headed down, we're headed in a direction, Steve, I appreciate your sharing that information with us, and I would agree, I think all the board agrees that, I know when I first, when I first looked at this, I'm totally for, I think, every place in the United States probably should have, be on a sewer rather than a septic, that would be ideal, and, but it also needs to be affordable for all of us. And so, as we go forward, I know that those are the things that, as we look toward the future, and all of those that need to make their decision on whether to form a searing district, or however we approach this, will
Well, you know, and I tried to briefly make the point that the $8,000 was right in line with the expectations and representations that were made from the beginning, because I felt it was very important, from the very beginning, to make it as good a determination as I could make what the cost would be. And so I think that's your major point, that we should, we should be able to tell people, give them a very, as close idea as possible, from the beginning, how much it's going to cost. I pursued the LID with that in mind, and I have, and I think our whole committee has the same idea, that we will pursue this project and have, and work hard as we go along to further develop our DFCs, so, I mean, I just, you're preaching to the choir, you know, that's what, the guiding principle was for the LID, and it will remain so. And I just do have to say that in the $13,000 is the cost for the electrical hookups and the permits, that was subsumed into those numbers. So, I mean, again, I expect those numbers to be just as close as the assessment numbers were, because we follow the same principles.
And Brian, we were the cutting edge of what I believe should be done eventually around the lake, and I've said to city council and past mayors, that this LID has to have a good feeling to everybody. And I not only challenged this board in past dates to look at those retired fixed-income people, and challenged not only this board, but the city to come up with grants to help them pay for some of these costs. I pleaded with council to lower SDC charges also, which luckily, I think it was in January, Lincoln City lowered the SDC charges, I believe, overall by 45%. So I think that was good, and I, I'm not criticizing you at all, I think you were cutting edge. In a make-believe world, we would hope that our city could be able to fund the infrastructure before the buildings are built, but that's not going to end up happening. But it has to feel good to everybody, and I think my point that I'm trying to make is two points, remain independent, get the real cost, and I would challenge you to come up with grants for fixed-income people, or work with the city to come up with grants, to not have these people have to pay $104 to $130 more a month on fixed incomes, when their social security may increase $5 a month year over year. Thank you, I appreciate your time, and I'm sorry you took so much time.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks. Any other comments from the board? We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.